Okay, sorry for the delay. It's had some computer issues. It's seven oh eight. Call the public or the we need to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to comply. United States of America. To the Republic, which stands on the nation. You're now in this court. With justice law.
Okay, just so the Zoom audience and our audience knows, there's no public hearing tonight, and we don't take any comments off of Zoom or through the public unless we have a public hearing. First thing we have is a correction from last month from Karen.
Yes, just for the record, on the agenda last month, I mistyped Thomas Reed's subdivision line. I had it as Thomas Green, Snow Green Valley. And I just, for the record, I want to correct that it should be Thomas Reed, Snow Green Valley.
All set?
That's it. Yep.
Okay. We do have. I'm sorry, we do have one public hearing that's open only for Evergreen Estates. So if anybody has any comments on the Evergreen Estates public hearing is open. Either in the audience or on Zoom.
Anybody has any comments, raise your hand.
Only on the Evergreen Estates subdivision, public hearing.
They haven't come back from D E C or D O H. It's still under their review. All straight.
I don't see anything, John.
Okay. And next we have the concept plan for Luzern Woods subdivision.
I would also like to say at this point that I have received some letters. And some emails regarding this project, but the public hearing is not open on it. So these will not be put into the record until the public hearing is opened after we receive preliminary plats.
Just identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. Brandon Ferguson from Environmental Design Partnership. I'm here tonight with the owners, Mike Roman, who's here in person, and Eric Moses, who's on the Zoom. So we were here last month for our conservation analysis. And now we're back for the concert or for the concept plan review. This is part of the four step process that the town has for conservation subdivisions. So step one was conservation analysis. Step two was the concept plan tonight. And then the future we do preliminary and final view. So quick refresher. This project area consists of seven existing lots with a total area of around thirty-three acres. The lands are currently mostly vacant wooded, except there is there is a little, I mean, there's a little RV and a couple of little sheds on in one portion of the site. The land does contain steep slopes greater than fifteen percent, and that's the reason we're here to do a conservation subdivision instead of a conventional subdivision. The land is front of John, Sagamore Street, Lake Tour Road, and Millrose Lane. So as part of the conservation subdivision concept plan, we had to do density calculations to.
I'm sorry, can you just turn that so?
Is that better?
Yeah, because we got, we kind of got a copy, but I wanted to make sure the audience could see it.
Okay, yep. So we had to do conservation or we had to do density calculation. So the total area of the site was around thirty-three acres. We had to subtract out the steep slopes, which are there is a fifteen percent grades. We ended up with developable lands a little under ten acres. Then we take out a fifteen percent loss factor for roads, stormwater, et cetera, which gets us about eight point three acres of developable land for the lots. You divide that by the twenty thousand square foot minimum lot area, and you end up with eighteen. So that's how we've gotten to the number of lots on this site.
So we're proposing eighteen lots.
We're proposing eighteen lots, eighteen single family lots. And we're going to have private roads, we're proposing. One would be the extension of Millrose Lane. And then we're going to have a short spur off of that, which we're calling Road B on the plans. Those serve three additional lots. And then we have a short road off of Lake Tour Road to serve four lots. There's also two lots proposed that have direct access off of Sagamore Road. All the dead end roads we're proposing would contain turnarounds that would meet the town and New York State Fire Apparatus turnaround requirements. And then for lot dimensions, so with the conservation subdivision, it does allow us to look at options for changing some of the required lot dimensions from a conventional subdivision. The idea behind this is by changing lot widths, lot sizes, lot setbacks, we're able to put that development and the more suitable areas on the site. So with that, we're proposing a few changes from the standard subdivision regulations. One is going with a ninety foot lot width instead of a hundred. The second is doing a front yard setback at thirty feet instead of sixty. And the third is the total side setback, which is the sum of both of them. It's typically required at thirty feet. We're proposing twenty, so ten on each side. Instead of doing ten on one side, twenty on the other, or fifteen and fifteen. The proposed rear yard setback line would remain at twenty-five, and the minimum lot size required would stay at twenty thousand. So we're proposing is making the lots, some of the lots a little bit narrower ninety feet, and then also changing that front yard setback to thirty. And what that does is it allows us to keep that development in the flatter areas of the site. Right? If we have to push them back another thirty feet, some of these homes would get into steeper slopes. And if we had to expand the front yard setback or the front yard width, the same thing, it kind of pushes some of the lots and to control some of the property into areas of steeper slopes. So we feel this is beneficial both to the subdivision and to the to the land itself. For utilities, we're proposing. Yep, go ahead.
Just so I'm following it correctly. Karen, are they using the mathematical method or the plot method?
Mathematical.
Mathematical.
For utilities, we're proposing town water would be extended throughout the subdivision. And the individual wastewater systems would be proposed on each site. On site, we'd also do stormwater management designed according to the New York State D E C regulations that would take and treat the runoff from the proposed roadways and from the lot development itself. The open space would be owned and maintained by the HOA. This land would be kept wooded with the exception of a few multi-use trails we're proposing. So we want to do a multi-use trail system through the development that would allow the residents there to use their bikes or walk or maybe golf carts to go through and visit their neighbors, go towards the lake. That kind of thing. So it's kind of interconnecting the community of the development with these trail systems that would go through the HOA property. But the HOA would maintain these lands or maintain the trails, and they also be responsible for maintaining the stormwater management as well as the roads. They'd also be allowed to, with our proposal, would allow to remove any trees that are dead, diseased, invasive, or had the potential of damaging neighboring properties or would be a danger to the general public. So with that, I'm, I know we've submitted the concept plan. I can go over anything you guys need. I'm here tonight to answer any questions you guys have.
Karen, can you review with us expectations for what we make decisions on tonight regarding this?
Basically, you're checking to see that this concept plan meets what was in the ordinance for the concept plan review, that they're meeting the required forty percent that they needed to set aside, that there are in there, there are stipulations about lots that all exists that have houses on them, that you can't reduce the rear and I think it is, I'd have to look. Rear and side yard setbacks, but they've already, we've checked. Chris and I checked that, but that's what you should be looking at to make sure that all, all of that is done. And so basically, you're, you just need to be aware what is in the book. Have they done that? Do you think that this is a workable plan? And then if you do, you can vote on it and either approve this concept or disprove it. You could table it if you, if you felt you needed more information for any reason. But then, after that, they will come back with preliminary, a preliminary plat, which is going to be all of the road designs. All of the, you know, the, the like perk tests and septic system layout, all of that. But that, that is, at that point, when we get preliminary plat, that's when we start doing like secret review and public hearings and all of that. Tonight, it's just does it, does this look to you like it is meeting all of the regulations that they, that are written out in this conservation subdivision section of the book?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And if we, I was gonna say, if we as a board determine we want the professional consultation, at what point would we say that and make that?
Actually, I don't think that that's called for at this stage. That would be when they actually. Yeah, it was when we have the actual preliminary plat and they can actually look at all of the design and make sure that they're meeting all of the criteria and the subdivision part of it at that point.
Being a conservation subdivision where the setbacks are different, that's perfectly because it, because it is.
Yes, they're allowed to do that. On page one nineteen three is where what gives you right view where there are no there shall be no required area, which is that twenty thousand square feet bulk or dimensional standards in a conservation subdivision, except building height is stated in the dimensional table, which we all know is thirty-eight feet from lowest grade to highest peak. And which, and where which subdivision abuts an existing residence. And Chris and I took our sheet and we put red dots on all the properties around that have existing houses. All side and rear setbacks are required to be stated in the dimension, are required as stated in the dimensional tables on those lots that abut the lots with the houses. And everything else there, they're allowed to, to modify if you agree with the concept of.
That's what I was, I just wanted to make sure that was clear to the board that the setbacks, even though they're not, they're different. It's allowed.
That's part of the conservation analysis is that you're allowing them to cluster these in narrower, smaller spaces and leave the other stuff basically forever undevelopable. And it's, and, and that's, that's the whole purpose of the conservation subdivision.
When you and Chris did that study with the red dots.
Do you want, it's on.
No, I don't need to review. I just go on to make sure that you guys found that everything conformed.
I, I is, I did not see any discrepancies to what was in the book when we did this.
Same.
My, my question is, if, and again, I get no vote overall in this, but and I've spoken to them about this already, is their land stops. When you look at the cul-de-sac road that comes in off Millrose Lane, their land stops here. And then Millrose Lane, which is a town road, is on our town road list already. Millrose Lane is not as wide as this road that they are putting in. They are putting in a correct size width road, but they're going to be joining with a non-conforming road. They are willing to at least have a discussion with the town about this road, but we're not even there yet. This is, again, just this area that you need to look at.
I also questioned the replacement septic system area. Seemed like on the on the design that they did not indicate that.
Yeah, I know. We talked about that, Chris, over the phone. Yeah, we do. We do have room in each of the lots. We just showed the on this, on this concept design, we showed a rectangle for the proposed wastewater areas, but there is room. We do have a layout that does, you know, that we've done previously that does show there is room for replacement. We know that replacement system area is going to be required, but not only the town engineer, whoever reviews it, but also by New York State Department of Health as well. Because this would be a realty subdivision with them, so.
So you plan on indicating that on the preliminary plat?
Yeah, the preliminary plat will show, it'll, it'll show more detailed area for each wastewater system. It'll show the hundred percent replacement area as well. Probably except the concept septic locations, septic tanks and everything as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is the Millrose Lane that they're connecting to the existing one, that's asphalt? No, it's gravel. Is this planned on being gravel, the private road extension?
I think the plan at this time would be, would pave it.
Pave it, yeah. And, and as we told Karen in our phone conversation, you know, we definitely, we willing to meet out there and meet with the highway to pretend about that road, Millrose, see what improvements it might need. You know, it's a pretty short distance, you know, if it makes sense for them to.
You know, add. The Sagamore Street that's connecting, that, that is asphalt, right?
Sagamore Street is asphalt, yeah, and so is Lake Tour, yeah.
And the multi-use pathways, what material is that envisioned as?
It'd probably be like a stone dust or a chip bark kind of finish. I don't, there's no plan to pave those. Yeah, something more organic, yeah.
And obviously, your road's going to be homeowners because it's private, right? HOA?
Yeah, they're planning to have an HOA for this, and they would want to maintain the roads as the plan.
There's one accessory structure indicated on Sagamore. Is that for private use or is that potentially for HOA use?
That's potentially for HOA use. We wanted to show them the concept plan because, you know, I thought they had for HOA use some place for the HOA to store some equipment.
So that's not, that's all. The pose, that doesn't exist.
Yeah, yeah, that doesn't exist. I mean, with the way the town code reads, you can't put an accessory structure on a, on a lot that doesn't have a principal structure. So we can't put, if they want to have a little barn for, say, storing snow removal equipment and equipment for maintaining the trails and the stormwater areas, they can't put it on the HOA lands because there's no principal structure on there. So the idea would be with this location, we could put a barn up there and have an easement to the HOA on that lot that would allow the HOA to have a barn there. And that's, I mean, that's, like I said, this is conceptual. We wanted to show something on there because that is something they're thinking of doing as they go forward.
So the lot five private owner would own the lot and its primary residence, but accessory structure would not be their ownership. That would be the HOA.
Yeah, when this lot, when this lot's created, if this is how it stands, it would have an easement to the HOA that would allow that accessory structure and allow the HOA to maintain it and replace it. That kind of language, yeah.
And then can you speak briefly about, I know last month, there was a lot of discussion about the overall subdivisions use of that beach and how that functioned.
Yeah, the fine, there hasn't been final decisions yet on how they want to work that. That parcel's not part of this conservation subdivision. That is owned by Eric. He's the owner of the Camp Tech Road and that beach area. And right now, my understanding is that a lot of the homeowners in the area have rights to cross that beach area in order to access the lake.
That beach area is not part of the subdivision.
It's not part of the subdivision. No, no. So I mean, the idea would be they might do an HOA with the same thing would go a lot of these lots that goes to the current owners in the area.
So the, the other, the neighboring buildings existing currently have some level of rights to use that beach?
I don't know if it's a beach use. My understanding of the way the deed's written is it allows them access through that beach to.
Access to the water.
Oh, access to the water. Yes.
And are these lots going to have access to the water when they're sold?
That would be the plan would be to have, allow them access, the same type of access, yeah.
We plan, this is Eric Moses. Hi, guys. We, we plan to continue that language. The way the neighborhood was originally designed was that houses on the water had their own water access, houses that don't abut the water or deeded a right to forever be able to cross Lake, I'm sorry, Camp Tech Road and our property, the beach, to access the lake. Not to, not to use the beach or the road or anything, just they'll never be restricted from entering the waterway through that end of Camp Tech Road. Our plan is to deed the residents the same rights to be able to cross that road down to the beach. There are two, two public beaches. Sorry.
Sorry. So it's not to occupy the beach, it's to access the water from the beach.
Right. I mean, the, right now, there is, neighbors use our beach right now, and, you know, we have a courtesy of allowing people to use the beach right there. They're not, there's nothing in their deed about using that beach, and there's no ownership rights to use that beach. And we, we plan the same. We haven't figured out, the beach needs work, the retaining walls and all, and we have to fund that by hopefully some revenue from this development to clean up that beach. But, but that's kind of on the back burner right now. But the, yes, to answer your question, the, the eighteen deeds that we create will be deeded the same rights as the other neighbors in that neighborhood.
The only other question that I had is, I, I just wanted to know when you make these eighteen lots, how far is it off? I don't care about the setbacks and all that. How much these lot sizes, how much are they going to be reduced over a normal lot size? Because I thought they were two hundred.
The required size right now is twenty thousand square feet for an, in the HR zone. And these lots are all at least twenty thousand square feet.
There's no issue.
Yeah, we're not likely to reduce a lot size because we have the ability to make them deeper and wider in the back and make it twenty thousand square feet. There's really setbacks that, and then the lot width a little bit, by ten feet, which just allows the lots to work a little bit better on the site and keep them in the flatter areas off the steep slopes.
I'm good. What do you envision? If you know, across of the houses that are going to be built there?
Good evening. Michael Roman partnered with Eric Moses. So, you know, it's something that we, we're looking at right now with a Realtor. Again, I, I think we're given opportunity for some standard houses that are out there, probably in the half million dollar range, but also ability for someone to want to do a custom house if they choose to. So I think, you know, we're looking at what the market entails right now. We're going to kind of use that as our gauge as we move forward over these next few months and further developing of the, the site work.
Okay, yeah, I'm not trying to nail you down. I've just thought.
Yeah, it's hard. Yeah, so I think, you know, intent is to kind of work within the, the area of, of what's there now and really understand the demand because that's going to be important. We don't want to be in a situation where we miss the market and then we just have empty lots, so. As we move forward with this too, we'll kind of start to show you our vision of what these houses could start to kind of look like. And that'll be part of our marketing plan too, so.
Your idea is to build and sell, not just sell the lots or?
We're going to look at both options. Yep. If someone wants to work parallel, once we go through this process, to work on certain lots. But in doing so, we're going to ask them to follow our vision, so.
I have one other question. You're talking about the thirty feet front yard setback. That is from the property line, correct? Not the center of the road?
That's correct. Yeah, it's from the.
So in actuality, right now, the way that we do the front yard setback is we measure from the center of the road back. So in actuality, your thirty feet will actually become forty-four feet in a lot of cases, correct?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, I mean, we, because we measured from the the private roads require, I mean, the roads require a sixty foot wide right away.
Yeah.
So we measured from the right away.
Okay, that's, that's good to know.
Yeah, my understanding of reading through the front yard setback was that it was measured from the, the right away line.
Okay.
And they're permanent residents, correct? Not seasonal?
Correct.
Is there any plan to have a design or, or certain criteria for the houses? If it's an HOA?
Yeah, we're definitely looking at some design standards that we would like to kind of have as part of all of the houses. But at the same time, allow for some flexibility of customizations. And then also too, if we do work with someone down the road parallel, they kind of maintain, as I mentioned before, the vision that we have for this, so. I'm actually a licensed architect, so I have a specific interest in the detail and the look and feel of not just the individual of the house, but of what this whole thing will look like when it's done, so. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Anyone see any problems with, it looks like they followed all the standards that were asked for in our conservation subdivision? And like Karen said, we haven't got to the point of actually seeing a plat, but this is what their plan looks like, which plus it conserves forty percent of the land and every rebuild. Anyway. Right.
I was gonna say, can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Now I'm making a motion to accept the concept plan, approve the concept plan.
Second.
Roll call vote on that?
Yes, please.
John?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Hearing none, the motion is carried.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you. Nice to meet everyone.
So we'll see in a few months.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start pulling together the preliminary plans and be back in front when we have ready. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Make sure I get that full size one back. That's the only one that I really need back.
Sure. So we have some minutes to approve. November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three. And March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. I know the March twenty-seventh got out to everybody through email. So basically, just if you haven't seen it, you should look at November twenty-ninth, Austin. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
March twenty-seventh.
Roll call vote?
No. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also make a motion to approve the November twenty-ninth.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Last on the agenda is old and new business. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up?
Yes.
Yes.
Completed. Actually, Verizon is talking about coming in to put on additional antennas on it. They're working with APA right now.
Nice.
And extend the footprint of the infrastructure that's underneath the tower.
A little bit, yeah. A little bit, yeah.
Where's the tower?
On Hall Road.
I know I'm on the EMT board and they said the service is a lot much better going down the road now that it's worth it.
How about the oh god, are we talking people putting stuff out? Remember we talked about that?
Free items?
Yeah, yeah. How long that should be and, and then there was something with the
The plan is, is to incorporate that recommendation from the board into the zoning ordinance. If we get someone to work, we've got a grant to work on updating the zoning ordinance, working on the zoning map, working on subdivision regulations. We're getting, we're putting together an RFP right now for that. If, if it works out and we hire a consultant company to work on that, that's going to be part of some, the recommendations to change in the, in the ordinance to incorporate that in there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Karen, anything from you?
I, Chris, can you think of anything that we've had calls on that need to be brought up at this point?
Uh, we do have a new potential conservation subdivision in the works.
Oh, that's right. I'd forgotten about that one. We do. There's another possible conservation subdivision coming our way at some point. They had been in and spoken with us. We had gone through it with them and then they said they were getting ready to make a presentation to the board and they hadn't done their official conservation analysis. So they're back working on that. And if it works out, they'll be in to do a similar situation as this. This is more up, it's up off Ralph Road. It's an area up off Ralph Road. It won't be in the residential, you know, the Hamla area. It's going to be in the residential town area.
Up near the swamp area there?
No, do you know where Bellinger Drive is? As you, off of Call Street, you go up Ralph Road, you go around that corner, and if you continue straight, that's Bellinger Drive.
Yeah, that's
It's up in there, up in that area.
They give any indication on the plat?
No, they, when I last spoke with them last week, they weren't sure whether they were going to come in with stick-built homes or they actually were talking like a campground, not a campground, a mobile home park type thing. But then when we talked about that, they're now more looking at individual lots with possible manufactured homes on them. But not a mobile home park. They would be single one-acre lots that would have manufactured homes. They're still doing their cost calculations and all of that. They, they're not ready yet. But that's what they're, they're trying to do affordable housing. That's what they're looking at is affordable housing. So that's why they're, they are not sure which way they're going to go yet, whether it would be a stick-built home or a manufactured home.
Or modular.
They didn't use the word modular in talking to us, but that's a possibility.
I don't want this to sound the wrong way, but what if, I mean, is it possible to put a moratorium on trailer parks in our
No.
There is one.
No.
You can't do that.
Not on our
It's not in our use table. Existing mobile home parks are in our book, but new ones are not in the use table right now. However, you cannot, if someone wants to put a manufactured home on a single lot, it's now a state law that if you allow single-family homes on a lot, you have to allow manufactured homes. But mobile home parks are not currently in our use table. Existing ones are written into the ordinance. They're not on the table either. But we don't have any guidelines to allow them, a new one to be developed in town right now. It's not in the use table.
Okay.
Two quick things. Anything on the wedding venue?
No.
And
They're still working with the APA.
Oh, and how about Evergreen?
Chris actually spoke with Eric Samblum this week about that and we had one of the, Matt Kierzgard, I think it was, in the office. And we were asking him about it. The holdup seems to be with DEC and DOH still in the wetlands. They're talking about doing the road maybe under a homeowners association rather than having the town take it over. And, but there's some holdup there and I don't really know what it is.
Okay. Right. Anything else?
Just regarding this, was there a wood subdivision? You know, whether it's next month or the month after, whenever they come back with the preliminary plats, is that the moment that the public?
When, when we received the preliminary plat and you looked at it and reviewed it and you accept the preliminary plat, then you call for the public hearing?
No.
No? No? Is it subdivision stuff?
So you have to hold a public hearing within sixty-two days of their official submission of the preliminary plat. So they would consequently, they would bring it in. You all would look at it and discuss it. And then you would set a public hearing probably for the next meeting. I mean, you could probably get away with waiting two meetings. But you have to do it within sixty-two days. And if you don't, it's automatically approved.
The, so we, we can start the public hearing without approving anything?
You, you have to because you need to take public comment into it. And we also have to do the secret before you approve it. So we'll have to do it at the same meeting that you hold or close the public hearing.
Okay, and the consultant would come in before the public hearing or after?
Generally, before you approve it, you want to know what your consultant thinks of it. But you also, then they also have to submit a final plat. And you could also have them approve that because you can deny the final plat as well.
As long as we keep the public hearing open. It can right.
But you have to schedule the public hearing within
And also I heard tonight that the beach area is not part of the subdivision.
So the beach area is not in front of you, so it's not technically legally appropriate to consider the beach. I know you guys had some questions about it and it's fine to ask, but that really can't be in your approval or denial of the subdivision.
So you cannot make any conditions because of the beach, because they're just getting rights. That's it, to make it better.
So my typical lawyer's speech is you can make conditions, but they probably would be challenged successfully if someone brought a lawsuit.
Right, just basically.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Make a motion, will we adjourn?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.